I know they're on their way down here.
Yeah, we haven't done one since I've been here.
Who's in the back room?
Good afternoon and welcome to council briefing. Ms. Fister, will you call the row?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zappone.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Let the record reflect that councilmembers Klitsky and Navarrete are absent.
Great. First of all, we have a commission appointment for the LTAC. And that's Ms. Rowena. Would you come on up? Councilmember Zappone, that's your committee. I'll let you take the lead on this one.
Just, hi, Rowena. Thanks for applying. And if you could tell us a little bit why you're interested in serving on LTAC and your experience.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. So this is, I'm applying for a reappointment to LTAC. I was on that committee the last time. We only met a couple of times. And so I think.
Before COVID hit.
Huh?
Before COVID hit.
Before COVID hit, yes. And I think there's a lot of things that are unfinished that I would like to do some more work on. I would say that I live in, sorry, y'all, with the redistricting. I'm in District One. So I live downtown. And so I see a lot of what happens when we have events like this past weekend and this coming weekend. And I have to say that a lively downtown is really great. And I think that we need to continue to do that.
So Rowena, I was chairing the LTAC when you came on. And there was a lot of very specific stuff about heads in beds and expanding that to really more community events that drive activity, not only for hotels, but restaurants. What, do you have any thinking around that?
Great question, Council President. I think we did Taco Sintequillas, expanded that during my first appointment to LTAC. And I think you're all aware that the Lunar New Year events have expanded greatly. And I think we could definitely do a lot more in terms of cultural, cultural events. I think we can do much better for Juneteenth, that's coming up. And that's now, you know, it's a state holiday. So I think we can definitely do more there. I think we could, we have, we are on the ancestral lands of the Spokane tribe. And I think we have an opportunity to honor that and do more about recognizing that.
I know there was conversation certainly about reinvesting in the powwow downtown, which has been absent for some time now. So any other questions for Rowena? Councilmember Dillon?
Not as much of a question. It's just thank you so much for being here. It's so good to see you. And thanks for all your commitment and work to the city.
Well, thank you. It's good to be here.
Well, if there are no other questions, Councilmember Bingle.
Hi there. Go District One. So I was reading your application and you had mentioned sort of the reimagining of the use of the funds. And I know that you'd said, I don't exactly know where we go from here. But do you have some sort of idea of like, these are the better ways that those funds could be braided, as you had mentioned, or anything along those lines?
I think the braiding of funds for me has to do with, we have as a city several funding sources. And it will be interesting to look at how we are using them collectively instead of bits and pieces. So I should say that I am on the Subcommittee, the RFP Subcommittee for the Community Housing and Human Services. I always say health instead of human, tells you my public health background. And, you know, there are different funding sources that the city gets. How do we make things whole? How do we connect those different funding sources to have, to meet that vision of what Spokane should be or could be?
All right. Thank you so much. You do not have to come back. We'll be voting. So your presence is not required. And again, thank you for saying yes.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Have a good afternoon.
We'll turn over to Mr. Jones.
All right. Good afternoon. And we're going to start with tonight's current council agenda for March 18th. We do have two items, starting with the consent item number four. We do have a request motion, or request motion to defer the following items. This is something that Dan Bowler can just brief the council on here.
Good afternoon. We had a late-breaking opportunity to acquire some grant funds to the tune of $500,000 to $800,000, which could be used to backfill and therefore not spend local funds on traffic calming. It's not at all guaranteed that we get it. We, but in order to get it, we can't have an awarded project. So if, it'll take between a week and two weeks to find out whether we get it, if we. Therefore, since there's a council holiday, I believe, on the first of April, I would request that this be deferred to the eighth of April. And if we're lucky, we'll not need to spend as much traffic calming money on that project.
Or reallocated traffic calming fund. Councilmember Zappone?
I think it's great to save money and use those precious dollars. I was just wondering if you can speak to the impact on the construction cycle.
Oh, thank you. I meant to actually say that. It'll, it'll have no effect because we're so early in, in the year. We will, it'll be completely wrapped up this year. Sorry. Should have anticipated that.
Any other questions?
Do you need a motion?
Yes, I was asking.
It was April 8th, correct?
April 8th.
I'll move that we defer to April 8th.
To move to second to defer till April 8th, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, any who knows. Abstention, that is deferred.
All right. Thank you, Dan. And then now moving on to the consent items, number seven. We do have a Zappone-proposed amendment. And then Don Kinder is here as well, if there's any questions to staff.
Well, I, yeah, I just requested some, some information on just their success rates and that sort of thing. And I just don't know if that's available.
I think I understood that question to be about their outreach work. And this is just the extension of their warming center, but we can provide, oh, you, nope, I backtrack. I think you'd asked for both.
Yeah.
We can get that for you. She, she does have it in kind of a narrative format. My latest understanding was during the warming center month of the folks they had been working with, they had housed about 11 of them into community housing, which statistically is pretty solid comparative to other programs. But we can pull an HMAS report and send it over to you.
If you could. That'd be great. Thank you.
Any other questions around? So a motion to amend the previous?
So moves.
Councilmember Bingle. Motion, second?
Second.
This is moving second. All those in favor indicate by saying, oh, come on.
Okay. So on this right here, the amendment, as I understand it, was just to reduce the amount from 514 to 342, correct?
Correct. And that's just because it went from 80 beds to 60.
Right.
Yep. That's the only change.
Any other questions? It's been moving second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any who knows. Abstentions, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. And those are just the two changes that we have for tonight's agenda.
On to advance.
All right. Now to the advance agenda for March 25th, starting with the consent items. Number one, this will be briefed by Rick Giddings.
Good afternoon. This is a pre-purchase approval for four small all-wheel-drive electric vehicles for Development Services Center. I briefed it at committee last week. But if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer anything.
Any questions for Rick? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Number two, this will be briefed by Lyndon Smithson.
Afternoon, council. Thank you for having me. We are here to ask for an increase of the contract with our outside counsel on our NPDES appeal litigation. We're adding $50,000 to it, to a total of $245,000 at this point, 243, I think it is. But we're not anywhere near done. So myself or Libby will be back. But for now, we need to be able to pay our bills.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Is this for how much you've already spent? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Lyndon.
Thank you, Lyndon. Number three, this will be briefed by Councilmember Zappone.
Yeah, this is just the contract that we have with our federal lobbyists. That is a continuation of that contract.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah. Do we know the term of this contract? I see it's four of four, but what's that term? Is that just for this year, this next year?
I believe so. Yeah, yeah, available one year.
One year.
And then I would have to go out after this year.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you. Number four, this item will be briefed by Luis Garcia.
Good afternoon. This is the agreement with WashDOT to assist in reimbursement opportunity for work that we do in the cleanup and abatement of encampments. Also includes some graffiti abatement that we do. This is all stuff that we currently are doing right now, which just gives us an opportunity to reclaim some of those, those dollars.
Councilmember Bingle.
So this 845 that we're getting on that, is that all for this year or is it for multi-year?
It's multi-year. I think it was 2025 is the terms of the agreement. But obviously, if we, if we have a greater need because we're responding to encampments in the, on their property, that's always something we have that conversation about.
And do we know how much, when it comes to the, the state property, when we're responding to them? Do we know how much that costs us every year?
We have not been quantifying it because it's been kind of lumped into our other encampment responses. So in this case, we're going to have to separate that out because it's going to be an invoice to WashDOT to reimburse us for that work.
Do you anticipate it being, I mean, roughly $850,000 or is it going to be, you know, maybe it's 600?
I, I would say it depends. It's going to fluctuate, especially right now when the temperature's getting warmer. A lot more people are going to be outside. So as we respond to encampments citywide, they're going to be looking for other places to, to, to be.
I guess this is a separate conversation for another day that we can have. But do we have any similar agreements with like BNSF or anything like that for the Viaducts?
Yeah, we do not. So this is, this is again, a positive partnership with WashDOT with some available funding.
Okay. Thank you.
Right.
All right. Thank you, Luis.
Oh, sorry, Katie. I was, I was just going to say thank you for going after this.
Absolutely. Yeah. And WashDOT's been great to, to work with on this as well. So shout out to them.
All right. Thank you. And then number five, we have A through G. This will be briefed by Amanda Beck.
Good afternoon, council. So this month, possibly this is a bump from the March 15th Energy Code adoption. Only time will tell. We'll see next month how many we give for you guys to review. But seven total projects, six of them are 12-year. One is an eight-year for 255 total units projected to be built. District One has one project that'll be a 12-year. District Two has four projects, three of which are 12-year. And then that one eight-year is in District Two. And then District Three has two projects, which are both 12-years.
Councilmember Bingle.
What's the 255-unit one?
So that's just the, the.
Is that C?
That, that should be the total, not an independent one. So if you have questions about the particular ones, I could break them down.
I thought you said there was one eight-year for 255 units.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. There's one eight-year project that's in District Two. But the total for this month of all of the conditionals is 255 units.
Thank you.
All right. Housing.
Thanks, Amanda. Now, moving on to the legislative agenda, we do have one special budget ordinance. And this will be briefed by Rich Lenz and Katie Kosanke.
Good afternoon, council. We have a very straightforward SBO for you today. And we briefed this a little bit last week. I think most of you are familiar. The Parks Division was granted a $6 million USDA grant. It's a five-year grant, zero match, fully reimbursable. So really net zero impact to City of Spokane. And really for 2024, just asking for $2 million in revenue authority to take in that grant money, $2 million in appropriation authority to expense that. And I'll let Katie talk about some of the quick, exciting highlights about what we can do with the grant money.
Yeah. So just a quick overview is we're going to be planting a significant number of trees where people want them and are willing to care for them. And then we're also going to invest in what we already have. So trees live longer, provide benefits for longer.
All right. So we talked about this just a little bit ago about, so it's a $2 million expense authority, but we're getting a total of $6 million. So can you tell us why you chose $2 million and how that's going to work with as we're receiving the money?
Yeah, $2 million is the max we thought we'd expend this year. It's probably a high number. It'll probably be closer to $1 million, but didn't want to come back for an ask with really net zero impact to the city. I think the biggest risk is just if we have to encumber a large multi-year contract, it could eat into that. But then the remainder will be, anything we have encumbered in 2024 will just be on, and encumbers carry over for future budget years. Anything not encumbered, we will put into the actual Parks budget to roll up into the city budget.
And so we're getting that money. We basically just go ask after we've done it and they reimburse us for that money. So that money's not coming in once a year. That money could come in monthly if needed, right?
Yeah. We have to invoice them within every 30 days. There is a process if we have a large amount that they will front, if we can show the work's going to be done. But for the most part, yeah, we do it, we pay for it, and within 30 days, they reimburse.
Councilmember.
Is, is there just an overall plan that you're putting together to, as to how we're going to spend the full $6 million? Or is it kind of just lots of little, little things and they'll add up to the $6 million over time?
We still do have a good amount of planning to do. But what we penciled in to the grant was planting 500 trees each year. Also doing education outreach, some follow-up to make sure that the trees actually survive and, you know, provide watering reminders and things if needed. And then they like, with this grant, they wanted to see a lot on the education side, too. So we might do some additional partnership programs with schools and things like that. There's other opportunities there. But really, it breaks down to $2 million on the planting and education side, and four on the maintenance side, removing those big dead trees in the public right-of-way and then pruning.
And so as far as the, let's say the 500 trees, you know, are you, are you going to plan in advance where those 500 trees are going to go? Or is that just going to be as opportunities for to present themselves, I guess?
Part of that education outreach is basically scaling up what we're already doing, where we have a partnership with a nonprofit and they do a lot of education outreach. Get all the sign-ups, then we work through them, vet them, do utility checks and things. But we already have a waitlist of, I think, 350 locations. We've been planting 100 per season, so we're going from 100 to 250 per season.
Okay. So the removal of the dead trees and then they'll be replaced with more appropriate trees in those spots?
Correct.
And so on the maintenance, because we've talked a lot about homeownership or where they're planted, the watering of the trees, that was an issue. So that's part of this grant money as well? Or how does that work?
Yeah. So I mean, we, we really, it's not sustainable for us to be watering everything. We definitely want to work on education and how we do it now is, you know, people that are willing to care for the trees, which is a lot centered around watering. We did put in some funding as like a temporary watering program in case people are encountering difficulties. We can kind of help them before it's too late. But we definitely want people to commit to the watering. We have worked with the water department. It's, I think, less than a dollar a year to water a newly planted tree. I think it's even less than that. But it's really, it's, it's not, you know, too costly to be providing water for newly planted trees.
And as we're doing our, our streets work and maintenance, I asked Inga this earlier, but she said that you guys will be working closely as we're rebuilding streets or like in, in Haven as they're doing the work on, on Haven, just to get more trees planted in those areas. Is that accurate?
Yeah. If we're, if we're doing a city project that wouldn't otherwise have trees, you know, we don't want to fulfill our, you know, requirements like for private development or, you know, or if, again, if they're already planning on having funds for trees, we'd rather it to go its normal route. But definitely those opportunities, if there's projects that wouldn't have trees otherwise, we definitely want to contribute to those.
Are there opportunities for us, Councilmember Cathcart brought this up. So on Crestline for us, you know, redid the street, you know, the street work was really nice, but it was just, there's, there's really no greenery along, along that road. Is there opportunities for us to enhance roads like that that were recently done and actually make them, you know, fully beautiful by adding trees?
Yeah. Arterials definitely is like a main focus because that's, you know, a lot of travel, a lot of pollution. Crestline doesn't have, depending on the location, the place is, I'm thinking of where we have planted some trees. There's very minimal right-of-way. And then there's fenced yards. But we do have some flexibility where we're planting immediately adjacent. But there's, especially if there's sufficient space, we certainly can look at those. And we're starting to put together project lists of potential projects. And we want to have lots of canned things. We have some canned things, but we know we're, we need to line up lots more.
So Katie, I know the lands council got a significant grant to plant trees as well. If I'm not mistaken, also to hire interns over the summer to water trees in certain neighborhoods. So if you have not partnered with them, I would think that would be a great partnership going forward. Any other comments? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, moving into resolutions, the first resolution is 2024-0028. In Abbey, I believe, is not here. So I don't know if anybody else wanted to brief this item.
I can speak to it. This is the list of projects under, that the Traffic Calming Committee made a recommendation for. We had originally said $2 million, but I believe this is bumped up to 2.5. But I think they were waiting on the final numbers. It was probably going to be 2.6. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, about 2.7.
2.7. So I think the current one says 2 million. So it's probably going to have to be amended. But it has a list of the locations for those projects. I've requested that we actually get a description of those so that other council members in the public know what Broadway means when we're talking about traffic calming project. So look for that amendment at the end of the week.
All right. Thank you. Now into the next resolution, 2024-0029. This will be briefed by Kevin Freebot.
Good afternoon, council members. I know you'll be disappointed that I have a whopping one slide for you today.
Oh, come on.
I know. I promised to do better next time. Chukobe will get it up in a moment. But this is the suite of comprehensive plan amendments expected for the, or requested for the docket this year. You'll recall there are, shoot from the hip, there's six private applications, one withdrew. And then we have one city-sponsored application. And then while, oh, there we go. So there you can see the table. That's the same table as last time. I don't have any new updates from you, I don't, or for you. I don't have any changes. I do have a response, I believe, Councilmember Bingle, you had asked about South Logan and whether that could change. Just as a little more detail on that. The study that you, that council adopted earlier this year included an EIS, part of their, the environmental analysis, that had a preferred alternative. That's what we're proposing to start with. Some little adjustments possible within that without needing to do another EIS, which would be a lot of money and time. But as long as we're talking about small adjustments in there, it's, it's, that's what we'll be working with Plan Commission on. If we go into anything severe, it might require a delay. It might cause it to get kicked out. So.
And on this, I thought that there was like four preferred alternatives. Was there not?
There were four alternatives analyzed, but part of the EIS and part of the study itself is selecting a preferred alternative. And so that's what we base this on.
Okay. So we couldn't just select any one of those four alternatives and have it be totally okay?
That's a good question. I'm not, I'm not entirely sure. I do know, though, that we don't have to have that resolved before it can be put in the docket. The docket is just saying, go.
Okay.
We haven't even gone yet. So.
Because my understanding was that we could pick any one of those four and it's just totally within the, the realm of what it was because there's, there is one that I prefer that I want to, that I want to push for. And just wanted to make sure that that was correct.
So the, the implementation is more than just the comp plan amendment.
Okay.
And that's being managed by Casey Downey. So what I'll do is I'll make sure to, to ask her that question. And then if, if I have an answer, an easy answer for you, I'll get back to you briefing next week. But if, like I said, even if we can't resolve that right now, it still can be added to the docket because that Plan Commission will get to chew on it as part of the normal processing as well. So.
So, so Plan Commission will get essentially what, what we approved to move forward? And then that's where they will start, but they can tweak some things from there? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. That happens with all comp plan amendments. Sometimes the height changes a little. Sometimes the zone gets changed a little bit. That's envisioned in the plan. And then ultimately, Plan Commission's recommendation can be based, can be conditioned on a change. At the end of the day, it's going to come back to you all and you can approve it with changes as well.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Councilmember Bingle.
So on the, on the one amendment by Northwest Renewables, I know that they asked for an expanded area than what we had originally talked about.
Correct.
So, and I, I don't remember where that ended.
So I'm not sure if this is working or not. Can we go down, go forward just a couple slides or?
Thought you only had one slide.
I was going to say the same.
One more. Let's see. It's one of these. I just want to give you an idea. Okay. So this that you see here, this was the, this was the docketing committee's recommendation. And that easternmost line kind of went to the beginning of the slope.
Right.
The applicant has asked us to consider as a maximum, a wider area, which is, if you could advance it one more time, that'll get me the wider area. You'll see that that area has increased. It's still all right-of-way. It hasn't gotten into private property. It does include some of the slope, but that's, they have asked you to consider that as part of the application.
And so in the ones that you're presenting to us today, is which version of this is being presented to us today?
The one that's in the packet right now is this expanded one.
The expanded one. Okay.
And of course, with the expanded one, they have agreed to undertake the cost of noticing for that. And a larger area means it's higher cost for them. So the, because the new notification boundary will be based, would be based off of this larger area instead of the smaller one.
Any other questions for Kevin? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll see you all next week.
Thanks, Kevin. The next resolution, 2024-0030. This will be briefed by Lyndon Smithson.
Good afternoon again, council. Thank you for having me. This is a recommendation to pass a resolution to settle a matter that, with Tatiana Presnell, the city was sued by her from an incident in 2019 where she was assaulted by a police officer. We do have some defenses, but we've spoken with her attorney.
We do have some defenses, but we've spoken with her attorney, went through negotiations, and determined that despite our defenses, that it's probably better to settle this matter instead of going forward to trial. So we did come out to a resolution, $300,000, and we would ask that that recommend... I'm sorry. The proposal be granted by or accepted by council.
Any questions for Lyndon? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next resolution is 2024-0031. This will be briefed by Councilmember Dylan.
Yeah. Thank you so much. So this is the resolution addressing a lot of community concerns that have come to us regarding fentanyl and opioid overdoses. We had a Public Safety Committee meeting where Dr. Lutz came down. I want to say that was, gosh, my mind's drawn a little bit, February. And got a lot of good, I think, presentation on data. So that was one kind of driver of this. We did hear this resolution at Urban Experience. There has been some changes since then, but some of the kind of meat of the resolution continues to declare a state of emergency, ask the governor of Washington to declare a state of emergency. One of the changes is asking the Health District to add fentanyl overdoses to the list of notifiable conditions. We did do some more research on this, and that actually has to come from the state. So we made some adjustments regarding the language there, asked the mayor to direct the Spokane Fire Department, the Spokane Police Department to report on overdose calls, a voluntary monthly report from all shelters reporting the demonstrated uses of Narcan, and then creating a dashboard at the Health District similar to examples that we've seen in King County and Snohomish County, where we have really kind of better real-time data. If you were to go right now to King County and Snohomish County, you'd see in comparison to what theirs looks like versus ours and how they're able to get almost daily overdose data. We did meet with Dr. Valeskas and Dr. Alicia Thompson around this request. And then finally, scheduling an opioid and overdose town hall. We have that on the books for April 9th at the Central Library. Trying to remember the time. I believe it's 5:30. Five to seven. Thank you, Nicolette. And thank you, Nicolette and Jenny, for all your help on this resolution. Really looking forward to that discussion. We are kind of convening what that panel might look like, and stay tuned for more details.
Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah. No, I appreciate you bringing this forward. You know, we've met with the Experience Matters crowd quite a bit to discuss what's happening, and it's a shocking amount of people who are overdosing right now on opiates. And so I have two amendments that'll be coming forward. One may end up being just a standalone resolution on its own, but the one that will definitely be going in is, again, the same request to the state legislature to allow them or have them amend Ricky's law to say, if you are overdosing and you're going to die and you receive Narcan and it brings you back to life, that it would immediately trigger Ricky's law, which would compel them into treatment.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Now, moving forward to the first reading ordinances, we do have one ordinance, C36504. This will be briefed by councilmember Zepone.
Yeah. This was briefed to that committee last week. Updates the LTAC ordinance to align with the state just on the purpose and uses about providing and promoting tourism. It clarifies the composition of the committee, and it maintains that the city council member is a voting member. We can opt to make ourselves non-voting, but this maintains it as a voting member. It also allows for other non-voting members to be added if we were to choose. So like other cities, add city employees who are involved with tourism, who might be beneficial to talk about it. Or you can even add county commissioners to our committee as non-voting members if there's an interest there. I don't know if we have an interest to add that to our committee. It also does not require city residents for members, especially the hoteliers. It's not a requirement. So I wanted to flag that. Other non-voting members also don't have a city residency requirement.
Any comments, Mr. McGee?
I was going to add that the LTAC committee is going to be meeting this Friday for our first meeting with the goal of launching applications next month, and will probably be bringing forward an amendment to this to update a name. That's something that people will identify with because the public doesn't know what LTAC means. So trying to create a name for it.
Great. Any comments, Adam? Nope. All righty. I think we can.
So that concludes the advance agenda for March 25th.
I'll entertain a motion for approval of the advanced agenda.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes? Any abstentions? Thank you. We are in recess. Please join us at 6:00 PM at the Northeast Community Center for our first in-person town hall meeting. We will see you there.